Are there Michael Tomlinson? I just want to let you know before I start.
Yeah, they're on.
Y'all all ready? Michael Tomlinson?
I am.
Good morning. I would like to call this Monday, December 1st workshop of the Madison County School Board to order at 8:32 a.m. I will now turn this meeting over to Dr. Pickles. She's going to explain what we're doing this morning here at the workshop.
So, a little different. So, we voted to start having an agenda review and then we would only have the one voting meeting once a month. So, today we're going to review our agenda. So, before you have a very detailed agenda and then it's also, you can see it online, it's not featured online because we may make changes. We'll go through this, talk through each of the items. So, if you have questions, all the district staff are here and we can go around the room to make sure everybody knows who everybody is real quick. But we'll talk about these few items. The December and January are typically light meeting months, so I don't anticipate a lot on here, but still want to go through the whole process so that you have an idea. So, if you have questions, this is the time to go ahead and ask staff and then this will start to be our process each month. So, Lisa, do you want to introduce yourself real quick?
Lisa Rogers, coordinator of the [inaudible].
[inaudible].
I can't. I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. Phil Hughes, lead director of PSD, mental health and student support services.
Iris Nguyen, food service.
Dr. Holmes, coordinator for curriculum and CP.
Barbara Thomas, coordinator for assessment and [inaudible].
Patrick White, coordinator for special [inaudible].
Brad Williams, coordinator of school safety and operations and other [inaudible].
Walter Copeland, director of finance and human resources.
Sammy [inaudible].
So, we have our agenda, so we'll have the call to order and then if we should have any amendments, I try my best to make sure we limit each meeting. And I'll try, if we do have any amendments, I'll email you out to let you know and then we'll post them and go ahead and share them and attach any attachments on there. Then we'll do the adoption of the agenda and then we'll have any public comments to me of the agenda items. So, then we will now move into the consent. Then we'll have the minutes, so the minutes are attached. So, we'll keep going through. Then we have curriculum and grant awards. So, we do have three items that we'll post up there or currently are posted. We have, and so Ms. Lisa and Dr. Holmes, if you want to speak to any of these. And I know, Patrick, could you pull the podium up? So, I know we will need to talk through one of these, please. We'll have the Florida School Board, school book depository and then we'll have a Renaissance attachment there. But then we have the student progression plan. And so, we did have the progression plan before, but I do know that is one, even though it's redlined, so that I know we want to talk through this one. So, Dr. Holmes, do you mind coming to the podium and let's talk through the progression plan? So, if the board has any questions.
And we're talking about item 5.2. It's on the next. Thank you, Dr. Holmes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You're now ready.
Okay. I'm here to answer our [inaudible]. Fortunately not.
The questions that I have are redlined items. I think those explained to me and why were they redlined.
Okay. So, we'll start that. We'll start.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The first redline item can be found on page eight, under recording and notification. We made a change there to strike in the local newspaper as far as how we're responsible for reporting from [inaudible]. When we changed that to be how we report that to the community as far as if we posted on our district website and if this is in alignment with the statute. Again, they removed, they don't, they, it used to be where you had to post it in the paper, but now they give you the option to post it in the paper or on your website like that. So, we thought that would be a more efficient way of getting that information out. On page nine, under item C on that page, participation in district and state assessment, for the, we added language for the, obviously the STAR early literacy is now kept test that the state mandates for pre-K and kindergarten and through second grade students. So, we added that language that the students will be administered that test three times per year for pre-K through kindergarten and that students in grades one and two are also required to take the STAR reading three times a day. And again, that's in alignment with recent changes with the state as well as adding the language in reference to the STAR mathematics, which is also required. On page 11, progress reports. After some discussion with the school principal and looking at the number of concerns we were hearing from parents, we decided to add additional language that required at the midterm of any grade period where the student is in danger of failing, that the teacher must make a documented contact with a parent to speak with them either by phone, meeting at a conference or by sending written notification home that their child is in danger of failing. This way hopefully, again, we'll catch those students earlier in the marking period so that we can minimize the number of students that will have received a failure within the [inaudible].
Hold on there one moment.
Ma'am.
Hold on there one moment, please.
Yes, ma'am.
The written notification to the parents, some of those addresses are wrong. Some students haven't changed their addresses, the adults have not changed their addresses. So, a lot of those things, some of them are returned to sender and then some of them, the mail is not open.
With regard to written notification, that written notification can be via, through class, we can also, teachers have the ability to provide written notification to class dojo. They also have the ability to provide written notification via email as well. So, any of those.
All those means necessary for them to get it to the parent.
Yes, ma'am.
To dojo whoever, instead of just the United States mail.
Yes.
Some of those others should be inserted in there also so that we're sure that these parents will be getting them so there will not be any, will not be any back and forth about they didn't get it. Then sometimes the mail is late. The notice will be sent out two or three days and the mail is not running late. That's why I get my [inaudible]. That's why I get my retirement.
Ms. Hagan, the way that it's worded, I think it would cover all of those. It just, it says written notification, so I think it would probably cover.
Well, I would like for it to be specified.
More specific.
Yes, ma'am. Specified, please.
No problem. I made a note. I will make that change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, would you like at least two methods, Ms. Hagan?
Ma'am.
Would you like at least two of those methods used?
Any means necessary.
Mm-hmm.
And so, if it's all of them, it should be all of them, because.
Dojo, email.
Email, dojo.
Well, it's also the parent's responsibility to make sure their information is up to date.
Pardon?
I said the parent also has a responsibility to make sure that their information is up to date, too.
That's exactly, that's what I said. It's not up to date. So, with that dojo and with the email or whatever and all that, most of that is more of up to date. So, we don't want to miss anything to let these people know that their child is not on target.
Thank you, Ms. Hagan.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On page 15, under whole grade promotion, there was some discussion here. On item two was removed because we took that out because, again, we've already addressed the assessments in the previous point and point one. And because of the state assessments, we're not giving district assessments to our little ones in kindergarten. And on, under mid-year promotion, we clarified on item two to specify that stipulation was for retained kindergarteners and we inserted the specific assessments that they're required to take by the state, which is the STAR literacy and the STAR math. On page 16, under item A, promotion requirements, again, we, after a lot of discussion conversing with other districts in regard to kindergarteners and them being retained for not knowing sight words, we made the decision in conjunction with the school principal to remove the requirement for the specific requirement for the high frequency words and insert that the student may also be promoted if he or she scores a level two or higher on the FAST early literacy or reading or the FAST math and the FAST mathematics. And now, and I want to clarify, just because we stripped that from the record, that is one of the standards for kindergarten, which is also addressed with their, within promotion there. So, it will, we still will be addressing that need. On page 17, under item three, again, we just made an adjustment to specify the specific STAR reading diagnostic on item three. And at the bottom of the page for the good clause, we added, again, we removed comment section of the student's [inaudible] folder by staffing to include, and included student information system, again, because that's where we're making our documentation. On page 18, under intensive reading, intensive remediation intervention, basically all that was done here was we inserted a specific process that everyone needs to follow in order to ensure that we are actually going through problem solving to really identify what, where, why the child needs remediation, to look at those specific interventions. So, that's what that pair process is there. It just makes a detailed process for everyone to follow for consistency and that was also inserted at all grade bands. Is there any questions on that?
Well, let me answer this. What's the process?
So, it's the pair process.
Sorry, here. Let's get some.
So, it's an acronym, pair. The P standing for problem identification, where we identify why the child is being retained, why the child is in need of remediation. The teacher's going to look at all of the data in reference to the student, all of the academic behavior, course performance, et cetera, to actually get down to. And it just basically details what they're supposed to do at each one of those steps is what that process does. But it's very clear for, so if there's consistency, because, again, many teachers do things different ways.
Exactly.
So, this will specify, right, a specific process for identifying those students with that need. On page 21, under grading student performance, again, under for kindergarteners, again, we're just revising some language here. Again, adding, again, this is where I was speaking, where the standards are covered here, where the students have to master 12 of 16 ELA standards. We just added based on the district rubric. And again, we added, inserted the testing requirement to give them multiple opportunities to be able to show that they are ready to be promoted to first grade. Under grades one through five, again, we made a revision there. Since kindergarten is specified itself, we changed that to grades first through fifth and we just added some more detailed specificity as it relates to the core subjects that they have to take and how that grading system will work through there. And again, as well as clarifying what constitutes the satisfactory means improvement or unsatisfactory. Again, on page 24, again, we inserted under, this is for the middle school section, again, we inserted that same process for pair for how to identify our students in need of remediation. Page 26, under promotion requirements, again, we inserted some more specific language. The prior language was very broad. It just had one broad statement that the kids had to earn 12, pass all their core classes by the time they were able to leave middle school. We just added specificity by grade point. Then the rationale behind this is that if we, we cannot allow students to fail all of their core classes in sixth grade and then be promoted to seventh grade and be trying to make it up on various admentum, et cetera. So, here we've made it specified. So, again, where they have to, by each grade level, what they would have to master as far as their core in order to be promoted. Again, this is early intervention and, again, it should minimize the number of students that we're having to do credit recovery by the time they get to eighth grade, which can be very taxing on a student. On page, any questions?
No.
Okay. On page 27, under honor roll, just added another category. We have the principals honor roll, which is for students with all As and an A honor roll, which is, which the kid may have a B in there, but they still meet the GPA requirement. So, again, just giving multiple opportunities for students to receive recognition.
That's a question I want to ask about honor roll. I've had some concerns from some parents where as the child had an A, B, and a C, and when they had that C, they were not able to do the honor roll. And I know that was not in the present one, I mean, in the previous one. And those grade point average averaged out to a B. But at the high school, it was these students that were told that that no longer applied and that they could not make the honor roll. So, has that changed?
For the high school honor roll, which is on page 35, currently as it stands right now, if it says, it's an A honor roll, which is obviously all As, a 4.0 or higher weighted GPA. And for an AB honor roll, it's a 3.0 or 3.99 weighted. So, yes, that has been.
Yes, exactly. That's what I'm saying, is some students were told that they did not earn that honor roll status because they had a C.
Well, it specifically states here in the, in the language.
Well, I know what it states. I've read it.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's the question that I'm asking. Are you changing it now?
Yes, that A, the AB honor roll, which is a 3.0 to 3.99, has been added, which would include those students, even if they had a C, as long as they have the grade point average.
That's exactly. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. It has been added. And that's on page 35.
I do see that only a D or an F grade will disqualify them.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see it previously and what stands now that C did not qualify the other.
Okay. On page 28, under makeup work, we just added, again, some clarifying language here. So, again, there was some confusion as far as whether if a student had unexcused absences, would they be allowed to make up missing work? So, we clarified that to say that students who have an excused absence may receive, are wanting to be provided makeup work and will be allowed the opportunity to earn full credit if it is an excused absence. However, if it is an unexcused absence, the students will still be allowed to make up that work. However, it would only be able to receive a maximum of a 75C for that credit. So, again, trying to assist students and helping them be successful. On page 34, at the, under exam exemptions, we just added a statute that that's attached to. And under, again, under makeup work, again, added the same clarifying information as far as what, who will receive full credit versus who will receive a maximum of 75 on their makeup work. And again, we already addressed the honor roll portion for the AB honor roll for 3.0 to 3.99 being added. Under promotion, again, we added some more specificity. In the chart above was the prior language where it was basically the kid just had to earn five credits. But again, looking at, we know that the child has to have four years of English and four years of math. They technically could actually fail English and math and still be promoted. We added some additional language on page 36 that specifies five credits including English or math, again, because we want to try our best to keep the students as close to on track as possible to minimize the need for credit recovery or grade recovery. And again, adding some additional language also underneath that bullet for students from grades 9 through 12 who receive a failing grade in a required academic course must repeat the course face to, in face-to-face instruction or via the virtual platform in a subsequent, subsequent year if we're unable to fit it in. And the reason for that is what we were finding is that, again, we had an overabundance of children that were being placed on admentum, especially for English and math courses and they still were. And again, because we have assessments that are attached to those, they really need that face-to-face instruction. So, that's why that was inserted there. So, it would always be face-to-face for core classes for remediation is always first and if we're unable to, then we would go to the virtual platform. On page 38, honors recognition, again, we added some additional specificity here. Also, we changed up at the top where it's a standard diploma. So, because, again, there is, there are, everything is a standard diploma now, so that was why that language was put there. And again, we are now looking at three categories of recognition. For honors, you have high honors with distinction, that is a student who has a 4.0 or above. High honors is a student with 3.5 to 3.99 and honors is a student with 3.0 to 3.49. On page 39, again, we just updated the chart for who, for the qualifications for bright futures to state the current standards for what they are right now for this coming school year. And the same on page 40, when we're talking about concordant scores, again, we just added that language, the updated language of what's in effect right now for this particular graduating On page 44, we basically put in for dual enrollment, we just changed the name of the course, it's actual strategies for academic, academic success, so we just made that correction there, as well as we removed the top two, three of the required, the prior requirements. This was at some guidance after meeting with NFC as well as with the state in regards to entry or possibilities for students to qualify for dual enrollment or early admission. This is, again, in an attempt to get more students to be able to qualify for our dual enrollment program. On page 45, again, we added the language with this CLT or the classic learning test. Again, that was not included, so we also added that as well. I think that was all of our redline changes. The others are strike throughs. Oh, excuse me, one more. On page 55, again, just added the concordant scores that are now students may use for graduation purposes. Again, we just added those, the CLT, because that language was not there. The others are the strike throughs are, the major strike through was obviously on page 57, which was the removal of the certificate completion. And again, that's in alignment with state statute, or state, state rule.
Thank you very much for explaining that. I've had parents call me and I asked them to listen in to this meeting this morning.
Yes, ma'am.
And with you explaining everything, they could hear all of those changes. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes.
Thank you very much. I have a concern and I'm not sure if you can address it or actually, I would like to see the principals here because thinking back on the third grade scores, when you've got more than 70% that are reading below grade level, what was, what is going to be the biggest change this year to overcome that?
With improving the third grade scores?
Yes, because evidently there's a problem there when they, when we have that many children not reaching grade level on reading. So, we can do all this talking, but I'd like to actually hear from the principal and thank you for your information, but something's got to be done and it's got to be something different that's been done before. So, Madam Superintendent, maybe you can, let's get the principal here and find out.
I'll ask her to attend the December 15th board meeting.
Okay. Yeah. I think we need to address that because there's definitely a problem and I'd like to see some specifics. What are they doing?
I really think that they should be here at these workshops also.
I just made a note for that.
Okay. Thank you.
I can speak to some of her questions. Some of the things that we're doing in third grade is, again, we have several partnerships now, one of which is with UF and the Lassiter Center for the targeted intervention where we have identified 120 students that are participating in additional tutoring to support where their areas of deficit are. We will also be part of what we're doing with the Renaissance, which is the next item that I have there, is, again, additional materials and things that are there for the teachers to be able to do lessons. We have the instructional coaches that are, that are, had actually gone through the data. We're in the process now, once we finish PM two, where we will go back and realign, identify the standards that the students are not performing well on and we're going to be, and through PLC, they will be working with the teachers to move those lessons. We've had a shift. One thing that I did identify when I, that when I came here was that there was some inconsistency in what we were using as far as instruction is concerned. We now have all of the third grade teachers that are now utilizing our core curriculum and following that in addition to what they're doing with the UFLI for remediation. And then the other problem that we learned was that there was a plethora of other things that were being utilized. So, what we're doing is streamlining the number of things that we're using with the students so that those, those programs can be implemented with fidelity and we are tracking and monitoring. Every visit when we meet with the state, that's, that is an area of concern where we do review that data and we talk through and we problem solve with our state partners. We also have our RACE specialist who comes in at least twice a month to meet with the coaches and the teachers. She sits in all of the common planning sessions with them when she's here on those days and they, again, review data, look at students, group, come up with intervention activities as well as helping Ms. Brown utilize that intervention time that she has built into her schedule more effectively to make sure that we have targeted strategic instruction going on during those times.
Okay. Now, you said that's third grade, right? But this problem happens before third grade.
Right.
You know, it's, it's kindergarten first and second. Those are the crucial grades in the reading to get them prepared for that test in third grade.
Correct.
So, there, there was, and I know we have a tremendous amount of teacher turnover. That affects all this, but, so we've got to really target all of these grades, not just... Were you talking about third grade just now?
Yes, I mentioned third grade specifically, but this is the system and the way of work for K through five.
Okay.
Especially with, with those early grades. Again, with the pre-K to, to, to two, obviously, we're using UFLI, we have our core curriculum and, again, they all go through the same process. The RACE, the RACE, I can't call her specific title right now, but the, the RACE girl that comes in with the state, she actually works, that's her focus, is pre-K to three. So, she, that's where she spends primarily the majority of her time working with those and, again, that's, that's ongoing.
Okay. Was she there? Was she there? Go ahead.
We have multiple eyes on, especially those early grades.
Okay. Was she there last year?
There was a change. We had a different person last year.
Because I think the focus needs to be on kindergarten first and second grade because by the time they get to third, if they can't read, now where are those kids now? The majority can't read? That's, that's the scary thing with me. You know, if you've got over 70% that are on a grade level in third grade, do they go to fourth grade? I wouldn't, I hope not.
Well, you wouldn't know.
Yeah, but you may not have that information.
Right. But, again, we do, that is an area that we did identify and, again, that is something that we're heavily focused on.
Okay.
Like I said, a lot of the interventions and things that we have in place are specific for K, pre-K to, to third grade because we know that is the most critical, that is the most critical grade band for getting them started on the right path.
Still, now, we will hold real time with the beginning with you.
No doubt. I have no problem with that.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I was going to say, before Dr. Holmes gets away, we do have the quote for Renaissance attached. It's for the NEARPOD, for both the central school and high school for social studies and.
Actually, it's all there. It says social studies on there, however, I've worked out a partnership with the, they are politing their ELA and math as well with NEARPOD, with intervention. So, as a part of that, it says social studies, so we have access actually to all four core content areas across K through 12.
Okay.
So, if you should have any questions regarding that or why she's still up there attached.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. What are we going to next, Dr. Holmes?
So, we will have the interlocal agreement for ESE students with Leavon County. This is the annual agreement. It's not attached yet, but we will have that. It's the standard agreement.
Okay.
So, we will get that attached for you. There will be some staff travel. I do anticipate some of it that way for Januaries. I've been made aware of some, so I anticipate getting those. Most of them should come from Title II or the various programs and I'll make sure we have all of those before next week. And I'll make sure we have all of those before next week. I do very much try to focus and not have anything come from general funds, so it's coming through the various grants or programs. We do have, at this time, we have the robotics team, the high school robotics team. It has, that's our only field trip request at this time. And then, may or may not, yes, ma'am?
Going staff travel. Now, in years past, I've requested this, and I've had actually a few comments made to me about this, about people going places that really, what I'd like to do is have them come back and have a little, in other words, what did they learn?
Okay.
And is it applicable to what they do, their job and all this? So there's been some discussion about the staff travel.
Not the travel part, but the learning part?
The learning, yeah, well, yeah.
Just to have a, come and give a little presentation.
A little presentation.
I will start making that.
The workshops and the benefits of that they attended.
As far as any personnel, I'm not aware of anything at this time. So, but, you know, that always changes. So we'll see what happens, you know, in the next week or two. If there is nothing, I'll just make the motion none at this time, and let you know there's nothing at this time. I'll add it as it comes up. Then we have the, the next two items are individual items for consideration, Highland's bus contract, and I think Mr. Reeves was reviewing the contract again yesterday. He and I spoke yesterday. So he was reviewing the contract.
All those typos and the dollars and all those things that was inserted in there? Have we got all that stuff straight about one lie?
So they've made some changes, but I think there's still some concerns. So he and I were talking yesterday. So I'll let, I'll turn it over to him.
Yes, would you please?
There was a couple of issues. So they've sent a changed contract. This one's now a five-year contract instead of a twelve-year contract. The way the contract presently sits, there's a couple of things that are of concern that I think you all need to consider. The first is that they've got a, they've attached a schedule that has a payout provision. So if you wanted to cancel it during the middle of that, or at any point during that five-year term, you have to pay out a certain amount to cancel it. And then it also has a recapture provision. So in other words, they've received these grants from EPA and those types of things, and if you cancel it during the term, that may trigger recapture provisions with EPA. Under the contract, we would be liable for those. The other thing is, and I don't know if we've, if this will work math-wise for us, I think we were intending to take the buses that are, that are replaced and sell them and have that money come into the district. I believe as part of this grant, we have to retire the diesel buses in a certain way that they can't be used anymore. So in other words, what EPA is doing is they're paying the money to get diesel buses off the road and have electric buses on there. So they don't want you just selling those diesel buses and keeping the money. They want them retired where they can't be used anymore. So if we're counting on getting the money for selling the diesel buses, I don't think we're going to be able to do that. The, so I think you all, I think it's legal to do it, but I mean, that's something that you all need to think through if that's, if that's what you're interested in doing right now.
Well, let me ask you this question. You know, everybody having little tiny homes and things now. So is that one way that we can get around not putting them back on the road? We specify, yeah, they take these buses and make little homes out of them now.
It's the truth. She is not lying.
Exactly. And so what I'm saying is, can we specify in the language that they're not operable on the road, that it has to be a permanent fixture where we, you know, we can still sell them and get some money from them?
I'm not sure. I think the EPA has some real specific criteria, so you've got to be rendered inoperable, but I can't imagine anyone would object to that if you, you know.
Because some of those buses are long and they're just a large metal camp. And I've seen them all the time on TV.
Madam Chair, if I can?
Yes, you may.
Do you mind if I step in?
Go ahead, yes. Please do. If you will, please come up.
Yeah, let me just, if you don't mind. Talking to Mr. Ansley, our transportation director, and looking at the projected, or projected retirement of eight buses, if we were to move forward with this option, I think there's very little value to those anyway, and it would be a very minimal amount. And what I wanted to do from the finance side, now that we've had a little more time to digest the revised proposal that Highland sent, on the revised proposal, we have this quote active through December thirty-first, is what it says. So I know time kills deals, but I don't think we have to move real fast on this. And now that I've digested some of the numbers a little more and worked with Mr. Ansley, just to give you a quick, high-level summary of our bus fleet, we've got thirty buses that are rolling, twenty-two are on active runs, eight in reserve. The ages are two thousand and eight through two thousand and twenty-five. Sixteen of those buses are aged two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and twenty-five, with eight being less than three years old, and those are still under warranty. Our fuel cost averages about five thousand dollars an active bus annually, and our maintenance cost averages roughly four thousand, and you've got to take into account that there are eight under warranty, so that, but that's a good number to work with. You know, I just, I don't think with some of the variables we have coming down the pipe with the increases in our salaries that we're working through right now that we agreed to, that will come into play retroactively in December, I would be hesitant to enter into any engagement right now. That's going to cost us eighteen thousand dollars a bus, and it's going to give us savings maybe of five thousand annually, so...
In total.
In total. Now, in a real-world analysis, you would need to look at the lease cost and assumed lease cost, but we have some cost in our buses that are paid for. And so, talking with Mr. Ansley, he does not see any issues with our current fleet and us having an o, oh, I'm going to say the word, a problem with our fleet. If we didn't acquire buses for the next two years, we should be fine. I think we need to, and the other thing is, I think we may be, it may be more beneficial for us than paying a assumed interest rate on a lease cost to drop in a few buses like we've been doing every, every year going forward through our local capital improvement funds and pay for those outright and not have the interest cost. Again, I appreciate the analysis of this, and I appreciate the option. I would not be comfortable from the finance side, and I have to assume all the other things, but I don't think this is the time for us to enter into any contract with some of the hypotheticals we have and some of the budgeting issues we're going to need to be revising as we move forward.
So looking at those options, you're recommending that we do not enter into this contract?
I'm recommending that we do not enter into this contract, and let me qualify that statement. If we were needing eight buses right now, and we had to make that decision, I think this would be a very viable option to look into as compared to a diesel lease or a diesel purchase. We're not in that situation.
Thank you for that explanation.
Yes.
And thank you. And I agree with you. Okay, I want to go back to that eight buses retirement. Is that eight buses that are operable right now? Would have to retire?
It's my understanding.
Okay.
They are, but they may take a little bit of upgrades from speaking to Mr. Ansley, but yes, those are all.
Well, I have done my research, and you know, I've talked to people that have been in the bus business for over fifty years, and they don't say no, they say a hard no. And I, that's where I stood.
And because I know that change is coming, and because change is coming, that's why I was interested in it. Now, after exploring all the options and the explanation that you have given, then okay, I with you. And we've had some financial burdens here, and we will have some more financial burdens next year with teachers raises and all that and stuff. So thank you for being careful with our money.
Yes.
Well, I looked, I'm glad we've gone through this exercise, because it may be a viable option going forward, and we needed to do this.
But not at this time.
At this time, maybe if we had an option for one or two, but we don't count that. And we're not in a crisis mode with our fleet, so let's, I would, again, let's table this one if we could and readdress it in the next coming year. And they would not agree to do just one or two of the buses? It had to be all eight? I don't think that. Ms. Rodrick, you can ask them that, but I understood they didn't.
Madam Chair, if I may, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
I can actually answer that. So Ms. Gibson had asked or inquired, you know, could we just enter into one? And it was, we needed to take all eight. Ms. Knight had inquired about going ahead and locating it behind the two schools instead of here, so that we did not incur that cost later. They would not receive the financial incentives as far as, because Tri-County's not offering those incentives like Tri-Duke is at this time. So there were different questions that the board had asked, so I did go ahead and look into those. So trying to address everybody's concerns now and get those answered, and I did let Mr. Reeves know that. So it was kind of like it's all or nothing. We needed to do it here, but then we would incur that cost and relocate in it later. And I know that was Ms. Knight's concern. That's not something, I would not say our raises are burdened, they're just an obligation that the board took on at this time.
And who we obligated to.
So yes, we need our teachers.
Yes.
So we know we have that.
And that's going to be a tremendous amount of money, our raise, which is well-deserved, but it's going to be reoccurring, and it's going to be higher each year also. So that's on the top of my radar right there.
And declining enrollment.
And declining enrollment, and...
We are fortunate.
So thank you for that explanation.
Yes.
Thank you all, and I think this is something we need to keep analyzing as we move forward.
Well, you will keep us up to date.
You will.
I appreciate you explaining that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next item. We have, you want to go to into the conveyance of properties?
The conveyance of properties. So I'm hoping that Mr. Reeves will have our contracts at least. He will have them so that I can include them and attach them by next week.
Oh, yeah, we, so Ms. Logan and I have been working back and forth on the contracts. We both got drafts to each other before the break, and so I anticipate we'll have contracts to present to the board and to the other side this week, and we'll move forward with that.
And then that's all we'll have. So we'll do the conveyance of the Annex to the Credit Union and then of the Greenville Elementary. So Mr. Reeves can handle those, and then Ms. Logan will handle the Lehigh Panado School.
Yep.
So that's all there will be for this meeting. So are there any questions or anything the board would like to see at this time?
Any questions or concerns or additions, thoughts?
And we will have another workshop December sixteenth for getting ready for the January meeting. I anticipate the January will be very light, too, because it's, it should be a light meeting.
We've got a December meeting, another December meeting.
We have a workshop. We have our December meeting. And then we will have the workshop, and I will make sure the principals are here.
Okay.
I got to get into this schedule.
Is the next?
Keep them on this.
Yes, ma'am. I will start making sure calendar advice is in.
So the fifteenth is the regular meeting?
So the fifteenth is our regular voting meeting.
And the sixteenth will be the?
Workshop for the following meeting.
Workshop.
So just to remind everyone, this workshop was to address the agenda that will be on the December fifteenth voting meeting of the school board. Following that, on December sixteenth, we will have another workshop in the same manner to address the January voting meeting.
The fifteenth and the sixteenth.
So, yes, ma'am. The fifteenth is our voting meeting.
Fifteenth is the workshop.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Sixteen, we have it set for the sixteenth.
That'd be the only explanation.
It's all right. I will, I will send out calendar advice so that everybody has it. And even though it's in the newspaper that it's for tomorrow, we had to change it since Ms. Gibson and Ms. Thompson have to travel to Tampa for our school board meeting.
So the December fifteenth is six o'clock, and the December sixteenth is eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty in the morning. I'll make sure there's coffee, and I'll bring something.
Let me ask you a question here. The fifteenth, okay, that's the third Monday. Is that when we're going to normally have our meetings?
That's the third Monday.
On the third Monday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Follow the next day by the workshop for the next?
No, it's only, it's only December and January. We're trying to get...
We're doing, okay.
Then we'll get, we should be able to get on track then for February.
So for December, we have a three meetings. The day, the fifteenth and the sixteenth.
The fifteenth, and workshop the sixteenth. January, our meeting is on the twelfth.
Okay.
And then we will need to get on the twentieth to workshop the February meeting.
Trying to work around the holidays a lot.
So the twelfth is a regular meeting.
January the twelfth is our regular meeting.
Okay. I'll get it straight after class.
Now, will these workshops be at eight-thirty?
Yes, ma'am.
All of our workshops are scheduled for eight-thirty A M., and then all of our voting meetings are scheduled for six o'clock P M.
And the board had specifically requested, personally, you requested that we had no meeting, voting during these workshops.
Yes, because basically, the public is not able to attend at eight-thirty. They can listen in, but they can't, for the most part, the working people, so we want to keep them in mind. Okay, so we're...
So do I have any other comments or questions I can try to answer?
Yes, I have to answer.
But I appreciate everybody coming out early this morning.
Thank you. Our workshop is now adjourned.